It's combined in the resolution, it's also combined in the application.
We most commonly, in my experience in the committee, have not abated the equipment for ten years. That's usually been a six-year abatement, and so to have it all wrapped in with the ten-year real estate property, that causes a little concern for me. And maybe I missed the last time, twenty fourteen. But, okay, so it is all together, so that answers that question. And then there was also a renewal on the same property for manufacturing equipment that had been...
Two years ago, yes.
All right, okay.
So you have, you have, you have two different ones you're looking at here, so you have...
Yeah, and the one we're talking about is the new one. Is that right?
I believe you... Yes, it's just a new one.
Is the one together?
Yes. We have not done the renewal on the personal property from fourteen, correct?
Correct.
So this is strictly the new proposed building site, and the equipment goes in.
Right, that's correct. And we were ten and ten on the fourteen project?
Yes, we were. Correct?
Yes.
But you did defer tonight the real estate portion because it still hasn't been occupied because of the ongoing issue with the franchise.
That's correct.
So the motion was for the manufacturing equipment, right now?
This is for the new, this is, this is the new application of the new portion of the building. We did not do a motion yet for the one, it was for the renewal on fourteen.
Oh, okay, right, yeah.
So we're doing the first part of it, yes.
They've all, and for those of you, they've all got the same address, so it's kind of throwing things a little bit. It's all the same name, same address. All right, thank you.
So, any other discussion of the motion? And this one's strictly for the new proposed building, the one million dollar structure, and the one point six million dollar equipment that's going to be going in that structure, and the ten new jobs.
Mayor, if I could add something just on behalf of the city. These tax abatements, a lot of times don't include a lot of specifics as far as the building's concerned itself. And we've been in contact with Mr. Kitzel. He has agreed in some form to do some improvements to that building more so than just the steel facade. And so that's in the process, and it works with, with the planning department, so I don't know how much of that is in the actual application for the tax abatement. It's probably going to be more through site plan and through the plan condition than it would be in front of this council with the tax payment application. So that's as far as the concerns with just putting up a whole barn building. I don't necessarily know that that's going to be exactly what Mr. Kitzel wants to build. And I hadn't talked to Mr. Decker about it because it's separate from the tax abatement. It's more so what the planning department's doing with Mr. Kitzel on the site plan. So, just a note on that.
Thank you, Alex. Any other discussion of that motion that was made by the committee? All fair or unjustified by an eye?
Aye.
Against?
No.
No.
You gave it twice, though. It said I had to know. Well, I thought we might have to... Okay, the vote, the motion is, was made by Andrew, and was sent in by Bob Plemons, was the abatement for the new building, real estate property for ten years, and the personal property for ten years, based on a recommendation from the HRDC. On the new portion that's going to be proposed for construction. We're not talking about the renewal from fourteen. This is strictly the new application. So, with that, can we call the roll?
Counselman before us?
No.
Counselman Rethen?
No.
Counselman Jeffries?
Yes.
Counselman Fumming?
Yes.
Counselman Karas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salomon?
No.
Councilwoman Bradshaw?
No.
So that motion for the recommendation did not pass. Is there, does the council want to entertain a modified motion to the abatement on that property? Take it individually, you do real estate, and then you do the personal property, the personal property side?
I would be willing to discuss that.
Decker, are you willing to hear the option that the council will eliminate the polls?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am, you had said that in the pay ass, you have separated out the real estate with the disney.
Because one is considered an appreciable asset, and one is a de- depreciation.
I would be comfortable with that because it's depreciating rather than a full abatement, abate of the natural, a little town as well.
We've gone anywhere from five to seven years.
Right. I would, at a one point six million dollar manufacturing equipment cost, I would be comfortable with a six-year abatement. I think that's been about what we've done overall in the past. Usually the equipment comes with twenty or twenty-five new jobs, and so ten new jobs is great, but it's not our highest echelon to warrant ten years. I would be comfortable with a six-year abatement on the manufacturing equipment, and with Mr. Kudniewski's valuable opinion on assurances from Mr. Schleter that this is going to be more than just a steel-framed building at a million dollars. It's hard to put a, put a million dollars into a steel-framed building, I think. So, if we're really looking at a million dollars assessed value, then I'd be okay with a ten-year abatement on that, not a ten-year abatement of equipment and real estate.
Councilwoman, the million dollars is the estimated cost of construction, so I think you referred to the assessed value, we don't know what the assessed...
Well, val- yeah, value...
Construction is typically how we score things, out of the gate on a, on a first year.
On the new one?
Yeah. We have an elephant sign. So is that a form of a motion for...
Discuss, I, again, I apologize, I wasn't at the committee meeting. I would be willing to make that in the form of a motion for a six-year abatement on the equipment, and a ten-year abatement on the building with the improvements that have been mentioned in the two.
It'd have to be enforced until or issued until the permit to occupy the buildings also.
Absolutely, as, yes.
So we have a motion before for that, but we have a second.
I second.
Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That passed.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have the one other one, the renewal of the two thousand and fourteen, which is performing at its level, and so that was not in the blanket. Do we have a motion to approve the two thousand and fourteen personal property for the same location? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Against? As approved as well?
Thank you.
Andrew, we have a couple left here, and I believe those, all three, had to do with construction as well, except for Mr. Andalos. So the one on Indian Avenue, and the one that's, uh, in U北...
One, oh, Delaware Parkway, ten seventy-five foot, right.
Those two were, were just new constructions, and that we wanted to make sure that we had the reassurances of it would not be abated until the permit to occupy was also included for the renewal through them. So do we have a motion to approve those based on a recommendation from the HRDC? Motion to approve those two, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. And then the last one was sent along holdings, and that was because it was nine to ten, but that was, the jobs were so reduced from forty to ten, without the square footage wasn't being occupied by office spaces for storage, and they are here nine to ten, which is close to the moderate, but there's not much of a moderate measure of community. So we need a motion to...
I'll second.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion of that motion. Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Is that all?
Well, how are the young ones out?
Yeah, that was the one on Indian Avenue, yes, yes. They didn't want to do construction, yes. Everyone was pretty, okay.
Mayor, I don't want to make this movie any longer, but I'm taking a point from Mr. Kiper, I think with the ones that you did a blanket on earlier that were renewals, since it is a public meeting, if we can just read through those and just have the monitor records, that would be returns here know that there were included, and that there was no, no issues with who was or who wasn't approved. And again, I'm not trying to make it any longer, but I think it's prudent to have that on the record.
We'll submit the, the applications that were submitted on the oral sheet.
Maybe include those in the minutes?
Yes, we will.
Because it wasn't on the agenda, and they're just approved as a blanket.
So the ones that were prepared by Heather, the Secretary of HRDC, the ones we went off to in the HRDC meeting, will be submitted through public record with those addresses and approvals of the years remaining.
In the minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, take care.
Okay. Greg, any reports from department heads, boards, or committees within, want to give an update that we've received? The Building Committee will have some documents to look at, we've received RFPs today.
Today was the deadlines for the RFP, for the public safety, four o'clock. We received those in today. The companies that were submitted will be spread at the Board of Works tomorrow, and given to the Building Committee next Monday.
Do you see family? Four, yeah, two proposals.
We also received back the proposals for the updates in the comprehensive plan and land use and subdivision ordinance. Subcommittee of the Planning Commission met, and that's a recommendation for the Planning Commission, which will have a recommendation for the council at the main meeting to select a firm to do that practice for.
Make sure the council's all there, the unit going through. Perfect. Next up then, there's no presentations or no appointments. We'll go right into public hearing. We have orders two thousand seventeen oh four eleven. Eventually, the planning administrator will present to you the, these properties that vacate, the utility easements between two, joining properties. The order petitioners D and L Properties LLC, this is, location is one five two ninth Sanola Court, here in Crown Point. And Anthony, I will turn this over to you for your report. I'll turn it over to the attorney for the, oh, okay, for Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you, Anthony. Ben Baloo from Hodgins and Davis, eighty-seven hundred Broadway, Fairville. First thanks to Greg and Anthony for the street line process, and attorney Kudniewski. Client owns a lot and a half, and White Hawk, there's seven and a half foot, he's been on the one side of the lot line, and the seven and a half foot, he's been on the other side of the lot line. Client had the lines located, there are no lines located in that, what I call the fifteen foot total, until the eastern, which runs down the lot line. Also notified AT&amp;T and Nisko, thanks to Greg's contacts there. I received emails from both Nisko and AT&amp;T, which I did forward to Anthony and to Greg, indicating they did not object to the vacation easement, if their lines are located to the rear of the property. Client has a prospective buyer of the property to build a house which will straddle the lot line, and so that's the purpose of requesting the council to vacate the utility easement. Again, no, these, no utility lines were located in the easement. Notice was published in the newspaper, we did notify the AT&amp;T, we received email confirmation they had an objection to the vacation easement.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will, before we bring back the council for any questions or discussion, I will open up to the community. If there's anybody here to speak on the orders two thousand seventeen oh four eleven, the public hearing is then open. Once, twice, we'll close the public hearing portion, orders two thousand seventeen oh four eleven. And again, the council, you can't make this all happen one night, there's no money, there's no fees, there's only that. You want to suspend the rules if you decided that this was the direction the council wanted to go, to vacate these, so a property can be expanded for a larger home on that footprint. Entertain a motion. Well, we have a motion to hold over, read over, for second reading? Yes?
Yes.
Do we have a, do we have a second to that? Discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Entertain a motion. We have a motion to suspend the rules, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All fair with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? The rules are suspended. Anybody want to adopt this?
I'm going to adopt orders number two thousand seventeen oh four eleven.
We have a motion to adopt, and we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion of that motion?
Any concern about the city needing this even in the future?
I spoke with the R and G Department, they don't seem to agree.
Please call the board.
Counselman Borick?
Yes.
Counselman Rethen?
Yes.
Counselman Jeffries?
Yes.
Counselman Fumming?
Yes.
Counselman Karas?
Counselwoman Salomon?
Yes.
Counselwoman Bradshaw?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Do we have a motion to reinstate the rules?
No.
All fair with an aye?
Aye.
We already had that. Those are reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next up, there's no deferred business, no whole business, we have two under, we have several, four other new business, resolution two thousand seventeen oh four oh six R. Anthony Kudniewski, Assistant City Attorney, will present the...
Why can't you call me Anthony?
They call you Anthony.
Attorney.
Oh, attorney. You two are like inseparable, so maybe it's just a, it's a hybrid. It's a hybrid. Sorry, Attorney Alex, A.K. Kudniewski, let's go. Sale of certain real estate property located at one oh nine Avenue, vicinity of I sixty five.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor before you tonight, we have a resolution for the City of Crown Point County Council to sell over a certain property. If you had the resolution in front of you, it's your pleasure, I can read that, anything to the record. States where the City of Crown Point Indiana is the owner of certain, certain unimproved real, real property, as more specifically described in Exhibit Eight, attached here to incorporate here in my reference. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six one eleven two, the common counsel of the City of Crown Point Indiana is the disposing agent of the City of Crown Point Indiana with respect to the real estate. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six one eleven five, the common counsel of the City of Crown Point Indiana as the disposing agent, can make a determination at the highest and best use of the real estate as a sale to a funding landowner based on specific location and uniqueness of real property. Now therefore, due to resolve, the City of Crown Point Indiana binding through the common counsel, hereby makes a determination at the highest and best use of the real estate as a sale of the real estate to a funding landowner. If further resolved, the City of Crown Point Indiana binding through its common counsel, hereby authorizes the City of Crown Point Legal Department to take any and all actions necessary and required by Indiana Code thirty-five, which I should say, I believe thirty-six, thirty-six one eleven five. To provide and publish proper notice and conduct and effectuate the sale of the real estate to a funding landowner, be further resolved, the City of Crown Point Indiana binding through its common counsel, hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the sale of real estate to a funding landowner, and take any and all actions necessary for the same. Adopted this fourth day of April twenty seventeen. With that, one change to the Indiana Code, in the fifth paragraph, you'll also see an attachment here of the client description, which indicates where the property is, one hundred and nine. Just to recap, on that property, property is acquired through right-of-way acquisition as part of a bigger parcel, we're retaining that right-of-way one hundred and ninth, and this is just a leftover that can be sold to a funding landowner. Makes more sense, he owns the property all, the one a funding landowner owns the property to surround this property, which would make a clear frontage for, for that a funding landowner on one hundred and nine.
I need to change that thirty-five to thirty-six for this correction.
Motion exactly for that, first script nurse here, share.
Do we need a, we haven't, I don't think we even have a motion yet, there's no motion yet, so are you making a motion?
He just made a motion.
Show man this resolution.
Okay, are you, are you making a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment, or?
Yes.
I make it's all that's improved, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we get a motion to approve the resolution with the change from thirty-five to thirty-six in the fifth paragraph. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Alex, nice job. Okay. Next up is a resolution two thousand seventeen oh four oh seven R, Anna's Day Care, petitioner Amanda Cole, owner. Michael Metz Jr. requests special use to operate a child daycare in a R-three residential district. This did receive a favorable recommendation. I would refer to Anthony from staff to give a report to the BZA.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Mr. Kiper came before the BZA on behalf of Mrs. Amanda Cole, requests to operate a child daycare, he owns Nana's Day Care located at thirteen thirteen North Main Street. Miss Cole resides in the hole directly to the south that's adjacent to the property, where she conducts clinical business, also owns Nana's Day Care. The property is owned R-three residential and located on Main Street, front and row, directly across the street from Mary Queen Restaurant. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be commercial. The fire department did report successful inspection of the property. BZA members felt this house, this house is basically located in a commercial area and made a four to zero favorable recommendation for this business with the following conditions: The hours of operation to be six AM to six PM, and maximum of twelve children allowed with one certified staff member per six children as required by the state, a privacy fence installed along the north side of the property, and the driveway to be expanded if congestion during pickup and drop off becomes an issue.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions from the council to staff on this resolution?
Is this the house that's right next door to Beverly?
No, there's a couple between...
There is. On the top that corner, as I said, it's an extremely small closet.
Has there been any objection from the public?
There wasn't.
I'm going to approve resolution two thousand seventeen oh four oh seven R, subject to the conditions presented.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, just one, I mean, why are we requesting a fence on just one side?
Because, I mean, it's fenced in, but it's a chain link fence, and there's a, there's a residence just to the north, so they want to plant a privacy fence between the property.
But the whole back would be fenced for the kids.
It's all, it's all, it's all chain link, but it's just not a privacy fence, so they wanted a, a fence that you couldn't see, more bright, plenty of light.
The other neighbors are all commercial property, you're right?
They're not, but the building just to the south is, is an identical daycare, so...
Same business, same owner?
Same owner.
Okay, great. Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, and approved, thank you.
Mayor, let the record show that Councilman Karas is using himself in the next topic of discussion.
Record reflected, Councilman Karas is now in the building. Okay, next up is approve a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement from Andrew Karas, this is his annual disclosure. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, that's by Chad. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all fair with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Is anyone around Andrew, no, he's coming back, yeah.
Come back, Andrew. You're the deciding vote. You're the deciding vote.
Let the record reflect that council is now back in his former seats. And next up is approve the summer park fees. Just to give the council, again, we, we understand giving late notice to you guys is not something that we're want to do, we want to give you guys a timely approach to review and make good determinations. With the moving of the Board of Works to the first and the fifteenth, which has helped get a lot of the documents that come through the BZA and things of that level, we are still going through some of the initial programs that the parks would be involved in, and getting it in a timely fashion. I, we, we made sure that you guys had it highlighted, that we have five April starts on some programs. These programs are things that have worked well at other communities, and they've done their surveys, and go out and ask the community what they would like to have, these were things that came up for additional programming for the Parks Department. And so they're ready to have these programs filled. The Board of Works will be hearing this tomorrow to approve the, the applications to the programs, but the council is involved in the application of receiving the fees, and that's why it's in front of you. So we, we are kind of put the cart before the horse, but we want to be proactive on these programs, because summer is, we wouldn't believe it or not, based on the weather the last few, few weeks, but it is coming, and people are getting excited to be outside or be actively involved, and the recreational program fees. And we like the fact that, through Jenny's leadership, that we're adding more programs and the community grows, these are additional revenues, we come back to the parks, and these are things that keep people happy with the many that have been divided through health and wealth of their community. So, we would ask your consideration on this program, and be advised that we're, we're learning on some of these timing mechanisms as we, as we go through, and this is one of the hiccups over.
Mayor, because this is, is fee oriented, do we have to...
This is just appro, it's, it's not an ordinance, you disapprove, you disapprove of the fees to accept us in for money to receive by Harry Park.
I'll make a motion on accept the...
Prestructure.
Prestructure for the programs, which I think is really, really good, I think the more options to offer our kids than we are, so thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, if I signify by an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, let's see, any reports, Miss Lady's manager, Diana, we have some things coming up?
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow at six PM, the midday of the mayor will be taken place at ten, eight to twelve at six. And then Saturday, April eighth, is the annual hub run, that is taken place on downtown square at ten AM. Roads will start begin being closed at eight.
You still have time to sign up, do the walk or run?
Oh, I'm doing it.
What are we getting between the time issue?
Bad in the back?
All right.
Thank you, Diana. Any other from department heads? I know we want to, we're going to defer to the last, just wait, Chief, okay?
Just want to remind everybody that construction is going on at Mayor Row and Sun Street, it's probably possible to be aware, to maybe avoid here, if it's possible, there would be, will be periodic road closure, I'm trying to keep this...
And, and for the council, because I do want to defer, clear the table for Chief Delore to give a, a closing remark to the council tonight, so if there's any other council business, we can, we can do that now, Chris?
I did attend the Volkswagen settlement by the NIRPC. This is, as you know, Volkswagen got caught being naughty with their emissions testing, so there was a very big settlement against them. Indiana received a very sizable chunk of money as a result, and as the one non-compliant air quality county in the state, we're in a real good place here to try and grab some of that money. So I was there to find out what we could possibly get as a city here. And fortunately, a lot of it, the, the nature of the fund is try to reduce nitrogen, oxygen, inox, as they call it, emissions. A lot of, a lot of the examples they gave were for seaport specific, which we don't have, as far as I know. There was one, if we have any diesel vehicles that possibly could be replaced, there are possible grant money for that. Just one, one thing that they did mention for, not just for this, but for all, all such grants that are environmentally based here, one of the things you can do to be grant-ready, to put yourself, to get yourself up to a five percent bonus, is to have a policy in place, this doesn't even have to be an ordinance here, this could just be, you can do your own department, or policies, against the idle rental vehicles. Have a play of anything in place like that, ready to discourage people from leaving the vehicles, especially diesel vehicles.
Good, that's great information, thanks for attending, Chris, for bringing it to our attention. It's kind of ironical, the state's trying to get away from the emissions altogether, and it's, I don't know, if that's coincidental, or a coincidence, or just if we eliminated all the accounting counties, all of a sudden that becomes their money. Just saying, I don't know if that's just a coincidence, so, food for thought, for air quality for three days, just saying. But thank you for getting the information. Any other chance to get to information or comments? If not, I'm going to defer a few moments here for Chief Greg Delore, you know, wants to kind of give a couple words or two, as he's come into an end of his firefighter career as he's come into an end of his firefighter career in the City of Crown Point. Forty years as a firefighter, 25 in the city, 17 as a chief. And you wouldn't think you'd look at least a day over 21. So Chief, give the opportunity to address the council.
Mayor, Councilman, as all of you now know, that I am retiring at the end of the month. This will be my last council meeting. I've served as the chief here for most of the last 17 years. Some of you I've worked with for almost two decades, some of you just a short period. But I'd like to thank all of you for your support. In the last 17 years, our city and our department have grown together. When I became chief, we had three firefighters on duty and one on call paramedic. Today, we have nine on duty per shift. Our ISO rating for the city has gone from a class seven in the city, a class nine in the township, to a class four for the city and a class five for the township, saving our taxpayers hundreds of dollars every year on their homeowners insurance. We've received over $826,000 in federal funds for new equipment. And we have another $1.9 million independent grant for approval. We could not have done this without your support, but the job is not done. Dave Grant is taking my place, and he is going to need your continuing support to finish this job. And I thank you all for your support over the last several years.
Chief. Okay, if there's no other business by the council tonight, we have a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Do we have a second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
On the list. Adjourned. Thank you.